Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council Briefing. We'll turn it over to Mr. Scott.
I'll do roll call first.
Roll call.
Council President Wilkinson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Klitsky is absent.
All right, go for it.
Thank you, Council President. If you don't mind, I'm going to take things just a little bit out of order here due to some commitments. So if we could go first to Marlene briefing, Ordinance C. 36654.
Alex, so Spencer's up here too because there are two companion ordinances. One is for reimbursement of transportation projects or reimbursed creating reimbursement area and the others to create reimbursement areas for utility projects. Both of these would be for growth-related projects. Basically, these ordinance revise the tools that are already there to make them in compliance with current state law and also add an additional tool to the toolbox. So that's what we're talking about here. Any application of these tools would have to come back to council to create an area and to get approval. So this is just updating the SMC to allow for us to have those tools available.
Any questions? I think that does it. Thank you, Marlene.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both. All right, moving back to the first draft agenda item for March 24, Rick Giddings will brief consent item number one.
This is the, this, this item is the first of probably two citywide vehicle, 2025 vehicle pre-purchase approvals. Just to give a little bit of background, early in the year, we send out some data to the departments, their, their, their own fleets, which include vehicle age, the usage of the miles that are on them, historic maintenance costs, fuel costs, that type of thing. This gives the departments a chance to make some better decisions about what vehicles are costing them a lot, what vehicles need to leave the fleet, and, and the, the, the age of the vehicles, that type of thing. Once we get responses back, take a look at the jobs that each of these vehicles do, make recommendations based on availability, lifecycle cost, sustainability, fleet uniformity, in some cases, availability, electricity for charging. As you can see on the attached list, a lot of the electric vehicles that we are recommending have come way down in price. We have quite a few of the Mach-Es and the Lightnings in the fleet right now. They've proven themselves to be pretty cost efficient and, and do the jobs that they're required to do pretty well. More than half of the vehicles that we're, that we try to purchase, there is either not an electric vehicle made, the electric vehicles that are made don't, won't do the full job, they're either too costly, or we don't have enough dwell time in the job. So for those vehicles, we try to purchase diesel powertrains. With diesel powertrains, we can use renewable diesel, which is what we, what we use in our fuel sites. In the case of refuse, we use renewable natural gas. Since a lot of the larger, more complex vehicles take longer spec out, and especially right now to find chassis, suitable chassis for them, there's a shortage of chassis out there, the first round tends to be simpler, more low-hanging fruit, easier to purchase, quicker to purchase vehicles. As always, this pre, pre-approval process helps us to navigate vehicle supply and these varying order windows so that when vehicles do become available, we can act quickly to get them in the fleet. First round includes 17 new vehicles for six departments. Total cost is not to exceed $1,769,000. Happy to answer any questions. Yes?
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering, so two, two things. In terms of where we're, which departments are ordering these, do we have the infrastructure to charge them? And then two, did we look at, like, just for example, the Ford Mach-E, did we look at much lower-cost sedans? I mean, I don't know why they would need sort of a luxury car just for tooling around the city.
We were, we were just actually having that conversation with one of the departments. The Mach-Es went down about $14,000 since they came out a couple of years ago. And so right now, for an all-wheel-drive vehicle, they're by far the least expensive that we can purchase at this time. So cost per, the total cost per mile has gone way, way down on these things. So yes, they, they do send a message that they're a sports car, that type of thing, but they are, we tried, we bought what was the Toyota B4ZX, which is kind of a smaller, more humble vehicle, but it's, well, it's not made anymore, but it's, but it was also $3,000 more expensive than the Mach-Es are right now. So this list is not necessarily the vehicles that we're going to buy, it's just the best choice we have at the time. If some, for instance, if a smaller all-wheel-drive vehicle came on the market that was in the mid-$30,000 range, we would buy them all day long.
Okay, and the infrastructure?
Yeah, so right now, we've got about 60 electric vehicles in the fleet, we've got about 80 charging stations, and we're always, whenever we'd look at, the first thing we look at when we buy electric vehicles is, is there electricity where we're going to put them? Can we put the, can we put charging in? We can usually get charging in in a month or so, so it's, it's typically not that big of a deal to get charging where we need them.
Well, I guess what I'm asking, though, is like, like water or, I mean, Development Services is here, Code Enforcement's here, is there enough charging stations at City Hall to charge those? Does Water have a charging station now, or do we have to install that later?
Yeah, Water has a lot of charging stations. They, they actually, when they built that parking lot, a few years ago, they made it kind of future-proof, a lot of conduit in there. So there, between Water and engineering, we have the most charging stations there. Fleet has several. We do need to find a solution for City Hall, for charging at City Hall, we're working on that right now. Of course, if we can't, so there's a couple of things that we can do. If we can't, if we can't charge where the vehicle's parked, the question is, can we, can we change the duty station to a place where we can get charging? If that doesn't work, then we have to look at other, other options.
And then just last question, and just in general, where are we at with PD Fleet and, you know, looking at a future, you know, orders of more vehicles and just what the current state is that, as far as we know? Because there hasn't been a lot of conversation on it for a little while.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that right now. There's actually a, an order, or we're putting together specifications for about 22 vehicles. As we know, that's not enough, but that's the money that we have to spend, so we're using, using our resources wisely. We're looking at some, some K8s for the, for the jobs they need to. We're actually looking at the hybrid Mavericks for some detective cars. We did the, the cost, total cost of ownership. The hybrid Maverick is actually quite a bit cheaper to operate than, than even the Mach-E, and so, and they need a pickup bid in that one, and so it works pretty well for that. So we're in the middle of that, there's more to come on that. You'll see at Public Safety, we're going to be talking about police cars this next round.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So Rick, in this, in this amount, are, is it budgeted for the fluctuation in the cost of vehicles right now? When you talk about the market, I know we have a list that we buy from, and we put our requests in, and I know we've done that before, and sometimes our request has not been honored due to availability. So I'm just asking, with this request in the market, do we feel this, we have enough cushion if the prices should go up in the time from the order to?
Yeah, and actually, so the vehicle market has stabilized quite a bit, and so pretty confident when it comes to the DES contract that, that we're going to find vehicles either in dealer inventory or special ordered from the, from the manufacturer that are going to meet our needs. The, the cost is locked in on those ones. There are, for heavy trucks, that's, that's up in the air right now. The ACT rules that were adopted, and what, the CARB rules that Washington State adopted are creating some shortages for, for truck chassis. So we're kind of in waiting-to-see mode on that, but we do, we're pricing in just a little bit of a safety zone in, in this.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more, and if I need to direct this to the, to the chief, that's, that's fine. But I, I know that it's been noticed a bit recently that the abandoned vehicle unit has a, a pretty large SUV that they're driving around in. Now, I don't know if they specifically tow vehicles using that, but I would wonder maybe what, what the reason is for, for such a large vehicle for, because I assume they go, they identify the vehicles, and then they call a tow truck to come and remove them. And so I would just wonder why, why the large SUV?
You know, and I, and you may need to ask the chief on that one, but, you know, with the police, it's what vehicle do we have available to put somebody in, in most cases? Our order, the order this year is going to address some of those right-typing, right-sizing vehicles for, for that. So I'm not sure what vehicle they're using for that, but I'm going to guess that it's one that it was just not being used for something else.
Yeah, I think it's like a, I don't know, Expedition or some, something real large SUV, so.
Yeah, and yeah, again, I just think it's probably what was available for, to put somebody in.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Next, moving to Ordinance C. 36650, Jason and Adam.
So this is the ordinance to clean up the, some of the language around inter-local purchase agreements that we enter into as part of a requirement for RCW for piggybacking. Councilmember Bingle, we had a couple back and forth on that, so.
Yeah, and the last email that you sent me, I, I misunderstood what I thought you were saying, and so I thought new language was coming, and that was an error on my part. But what I would love to do is still work that out with you, and so I would like to make a motion on this to defer the final reading of this to April 14th, which would give us some time to work through the language, because I don't think there's a big disagreement here. I think it's just a little, you know, some, some massaging here and there, and then we'll be good to go.
Right, right, and like, and like we talked about, that has, the language that's in there that you have concerns about has been in our code for quite some time, so, and it matches the language at RCW, but absolutely, if we need the additional time, it's not going to have an operational impact if we delay that a few weeks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second the, the motion.
On the timeline, our council manager and I have been talking about, what is the intent of our deferrals on timelines and to submit amendments? And, and final reading's the 14th, that would make first reading the 31st. And I believe the intent when we adopted our rules was that when we defer something to amend it, we want that, the first reading to be the most up-to-date version of it. So if we do the first reading on the 31st, then we would need to adopt the changes next week, the 24th, which means the amendment would need to be submitted by this Wednesday. Do you think that's enough time?
I, I think so.
Just comparing the timeline.
Depending on your feedback, yeah, I think we can do that.
No, spring break.
Oh.
On the 7th. Yeah, so extra long because of that.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to go to the 21st if that gives us extra time, but.
It was more a question if you think you would be ready to submit it by this Wednesday.
Right.
If not, then it would be pushing an extra week.
Okay. I haven't studied this one, but it doesn't sound like a very complicated amendment, does it? Yeah, it was just, it was just the difference between join and joint, and I know that we, we have that current language in, in the code, but in the email, it was like, I see the other part, what you're talking about, and it's also in the code, but it's different language than what we're talking about, correct?
Councilman Kacart.
Just a point of information for Chris, I wonder, I mean, if, if the intent was one versus the other, and you're trying to clarify their intent, could this be considered just Scribner error and, and be corrected by the clerk?
I'd probably look at Ms. Pfister before I would answer that, but I, again, I didn't study it enough, but I would suggest that we not treat it as a Scribner's error, one and down, so.
Adam, were you going to speak?
Well, I don't think it's, there's, it's not a typo, it's just a reflection of Correct, yeah. Like, the RCW and just language that already exists, so it's not a, it's not a Scribner error.
Yeah. I guess, I mean, I can withdraw my motion and.
Well, we can wait till that part of the agenda today, Agenda Review, talk about it. We're still on the administrative briefing side, but.
Oh, oh, sure. Okay, well, I will make a separate motion to defer then. Can I withdraw my motion here?
Yeah.
Okay, I withdraw, I'll agree, yeah.
If the council president recognized it or not.
Yes, thank you.
Sure, yeah.
All right, moving on to draft agenda for March 31, I've got Tammy Palmquist briefing, Ordinance C. 36657.
Good afternoon. I just want to add, like, the DSC, we don't park our vehicles downtown, so they park their vehicle at either the closest fire station to their home address or the Nelson Center, depending on where they live. And those have charging stations, so they're rarely downtown needing charging.
I did not know that, thank you.
That's why I wanted to add it, just so you knew.
And, and for the other kind of City Hall-centric vehicles that aren't able to do that, we just kind of rotate through the charger out here, because most of them are light enough use that they can charge once a week or so. So that's currently how we're handling it, but that is something we've been looking at with Rick and the team, because there will be more.
Yep. Okay, so we adopted the new fee regulations. Once we started plugging them into Acela, we realized a couple of them needed better metrics, units of measurement, so we wanted to update the table to make sure that that unit of measurement was clear. There's a couple that were missing the dollar signs, and so it wasn't 10,000 units, it was $10,000 that was the unit. There was also an opportunity to reduce, like, the plumbing fixtures and just make it a plumbing fixture and not specify, is it a bathtub, is it a washer, dishwasher, floor drain, floor sink? So just reducing the table to be a plumbing fixture. And so anywhere we could compress it that had the same fee, we tried to do that. The other thing is we reduced the plumbing fixture from the 15 that we changed it to, to back down to 13 after we started going back and, you know, just kind of looking how these new permits were coming in, we felt that was still adequate. Same with the historic preservation, they consolidated two that were the same fee so that it made it one page but didn't change any of, any of the content. And then the other one was the short-term rental, that was a typo when we did the new table, so we put it back to the original fee, because that was supposed to not change. Any questions? Thank you.
And I think that's all for me today.
All right, we'll turn it over to Mr. Wright, walk us through our changes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. We obviously don't have a legislative agenda tonight, so no changes to that agenda anticipated for next week's agenda, March 24th. We have several possible items. The first would be, we might as well go ahead and take up Ordinance 36650 relating to inter-local agreements.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to defer final reading of Ordinance C. 36650 to April 21st.
Move to the second?
That's the one that we were talking about, Jason and Bertie's thing. I'll speak to that again. I don't know that there's going to be any, any major changes, just being able to join an agreement versus a joint agreement. To me, I think there's significant difference in that language, just want to work that out on my own. And speaking with Jason, you know, there are certain contracts that they do enter into where it's like a data-sharing agreement or sharing a contract or something like that, that's not something that necessarily needs to come before council, and that's the language that they're talking about, and that's what they're saying, they have the ability to go into these agreements without coming before council, because it doesn't reach a council threshold on contract amount or something like that. And so I'm just working through the, the details of that, and I don't, I don't expect a, a major change there.
It's been moved in second for a deferral. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes, abstentions, that is deferred.
Thank you, council. Next item we can take up would be related to Resolutions 20250019 and 20250020. These relate to council positions on state legislation.
Council President. Council President.
Councilman Kacart, sorry, yes.
Yeah, I would make a motion to defer these for one month, I believe April 14th, with the intent of providing an amendment to them, to tweak the language, to, to address the, the fact that these did not move through the, the first body of the legislative process.
I'll second.
Any council commentary? Councilmembers upon?
Yeah, I would actually be in support of deferring these indefinitely, because they are no longer live bills, and also I think this process, our, our legislative process that we have historically used and that a lot of organizations use creates an executive committee to weigh in on active legislation and bills, and the council gives guiding principles, such as AWC has an executive committee on that. So I don't, could I make an amendment to the motion to defer indefinitely or vote this down and?
You can make a, propose a motion to amend the current motion on the table, yes.
So I, I move to amend it, the motion to defer indefinitely.
Through the second? Second, okay. Councilman Kacart.
Yeah, I guess just a couple of things. So one, I don't, I don't believe we've actually adopted any guiding principles. We adopted a legislative agenda that was pretty specific to certain items, and so that's, I, I mean, I think frankly, guiding principles would probably be a better way and it'd be more appropriate for when the legislative body does decide to move forward on certain legislation, supporting it or opposing it. But that being the case, that's not where we're at right now. And secondarily, with regards to the ledge committee maybe making some of these decisions, that's not in our rules. We haven't, we've been pretty big sticklers to our rules, so this is sort of an allowed, I think, way to go. And speaking specifically to the, the resolution regarding the moving election days from odd years to even years, I made a request to have that included on the agenda at the legislative committee. I was assured that it was on the agenda, and I was told by our Government Affairs Director, Manager, that in fact, there was no quorum at that meeting to even consider or talk about the item. So I tried my best, I can't help if the committee wasn't able to come together for that meeting, and I had to move forward with moving this, this resolution forward. I don't, I don't know what happened on, on 1380, I'm not sure the process there, but speaking specifically to even-year elections, that was the case.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I'm in favor of indefinitely deferring, you know, 1380. I'm a little torn on the mid-year elections. I did stand up here and say I was not supportive indefinitely deferring that, because I am in support of even-year elections, however, that, this is when the bill was in play. Both of these bills do not have a chance in the Senate. 1380 was never up for consideration for floor action. For even-year elections, there were a lot of concerns that came out about the bill. If it does come back and pass, I will eat a copy of the legislation up here on the dais. So I just don't see that happening.
Councilor Sapon?
Yeah, I know I, we don't have formal policies and procedures on city council for really much besides our rules, but I think that, having talked with folks, I think it would be great for this, traffic calming and others that we kind of have historically just done without a formal process, creating those kind of administrative policies or councilmatic policies for our operations so that we can all have a more formal understanding of it, I think would be helpful, and that could be adopted as, as that way for our future guiding on how do we deal with legislation. I think that would be helpful for us to get a little bit more formal.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I would, I would say I don't obviously support deferring these indefinitely. I mean, you know, deferring indefinitely has been code for, we don't want to take a stand on it, we don't want to vote on it, and so we're going to, we're going to kill it by deferral, which I think is pretty cowardly, but that's one man's opinion. The other thing that I, I have a real problem about this is, is that if everything has to go through the executive committee, and if everything can only come before the full body if it goes through the executive committee, then there's never going to be a dissenting view that ever comes out. And that's the problem, is that if we believe in minority representation when it comes to representation, then this, this effectively kills that. It effectively removes minority representation, which I think is pretty shameful, and so I think that's, that's a bad, a bad move. On the, on the bills themselves, I think we all know that there are times that things go before the state and they fail, and then they come back the next year and they're much more viable, right? After more negotiation has happened, and even if has to come a third time, right? It still happens. And so the, the bill for this year may or may not be dead, right? Because there are still processes to bring them back, am I right? Everybody up here understands that. So there's still a process to where they can come back and be, and be very viable. And so for us taking a position on either of these, even if it's a, hey, actually, we might support that, that's something that does have future value to the state legislature. And so I don't think that, to say that they're dead is, is accurate. I think they might be slowly moving for now, but dead would be, I think, an inaccurate representation of the current situation. And so I think it's, I think it's bad for a lot of reasons, and I do believe that us up here as a council believe in representation, and so I would hope that my fellow council members would see the value of a dissenting voice being able to be lifted up and heard.
I'm with Councilman Kacart, I'm with Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, just a couple of things. So just piggybacking on what Councilman Bingle said, I mean, it's, it's very true, I've, I've worked over there and I kind of know how it works. Certainly, there's what's called NTIB, you may have heard of that, you know, Necessary to Implement the Budget. Anything can be necessary to implement the budget if certain legislators withhold their votes, saying that we will only support X if, if Y happens. That certainly has happened on, on occasion, and it's kind of a joke when you talk about NTIB, because, you know, the joke is, anything can be NTIB. And. And, and so secondarily, there's, and not necessarily regularly used, although I have seen it in action, you can go to the Ninth Order and pull a bill straight to the floor. And so if there was some, whatever reason on either of these, some decision to do that, maybe wanting to bypass committee, maybe wanting to avoid some public conversation, you could move to go to the Ninth Order. They certainly have the votes to, to make that sort of thing happen, and, and pull the vote directly to the floor at any point before it's any die. So I just point that out. To say that, that that would happen is likely to happen, you know, probably low odds, but, but it certainly can. And then secondarily, I would just say, the reason I'm interested in deferring is, and not, not just removing it, is because I would like to amend the language to make it clear that we're generally opposing, and then to also add a statement that this is to be added to our next legislative agenda, which I think is, is something that it's important to consider. The earlier we do those things, I think the better for us as a body. I've always advocated that we should try to put those legislative agendas together much earlier, and, and I think that that's important, that we do that. And then second, and then lastly, I would just say, in response to sort of the, the rules and processes around this, if something like that's going to be drawn up, I think it's very important that we have some considerations for timeliness, because sometimes things happen very quickly, and a council member might want to bring, say, a resolution opposing legislation here, and, and knowing that that's moving fast, maybe it comes up late. A good example would be that when the transpo budget comes out, there's a very high likelihood that they're going to propose screwing over our community and removing funding for the North-South Corridor. And when you consider the timelines of going through committee, going to, back to the council, it would basically be the end of session by the time that we do that. And so I will be bringing a letter forward and will likely be proposing that we suspend the rules to do that, and maybe even take some other, other steps. But, but there's timeliness, and so traffic calming, it's a little less of, of that, but there are some hard deadlines that come up, and perhaps a project comes up, you know, late and somebody's not on traffic calming and wants to have that addressed. I think we, we need to make space for that. So whenever these rules and processes are developed, I, I think that's probably a good thing overall. More clarity is good, but we need to address timeliness.
Yeah, and I believe we did this last year with the North-South Corridor funding. I believe we brought forward a resolution that I, I sponsored and passed unanimously about like, hey, we want this project fully funded. It was a great bipartisan effort, you know, by our, by our state representatives, you know, Democrat, Republican, everybody came together on this to say we want this to be done, and that was an example of us going outside of the, the process that, you know, we have historically followed, to say because of the timeliness issue, this is something that needs to be said. And so it's not as if this has never happened. It happened last year by this body.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, no problem saying I oppose thirteen eighty. And I also think that it's not, the, the nature around that conversation with legislation, I think, was trying to, oftentimes, you're not doing this, but certainly others were trying to taunt and bully a response into opposition, which I don't think is ever a, a wise tactic. I also think, I agree with Councilmember Cathcart about the need for some of that nibbleness when things do come up rather quickly. I think it, this does underscore the need to kind of tighten up our, our rules and procedures around legislation. Definitely interested in looking at our lobbying ordinance and allowing for some of that nibbleness if there are council members who do want to weigh in individually. But also, when you look at our legislative agenda as a whole, and you think about a lot of the priority legislation that every council member here, to an extent, has really, I think, played a part in, in moving forward. Obviously, really disappointed with the waste-to-energy facility, but seeing Shrek move forward, the expansion or the expanded timeline for the Growth Management Act, there's a lot of good stuff that has been moving forward, which I think is a testament to the presence that this city does have an Olympia.
So council, Mr. Wright, am I taking Mr. McCattart's or Mr. Zepone's?
You take up Councilmember Zepone's motion to amend first, since then submending the other motion, so.
Okay, so there was an amendment on the floor and second by Councilmember Klitsky for indefinite deferral.
Actually, it's a motion to amend the motion.
Motion to amend the motion. All those in favor of the motion to amend the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Abstentions?
Any noes?
Noes? I was getting there. Okay.
So now you take up the motion to postpone indefinitely, since that's what's been changed too.
There's a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Noes? Abstentions? That passes, all right.
Thank you, counsel. One more matter, and that relates to ordinance number C.36641. Your notes will indicate two amendments that have been, were filed last Wednesday by Councilmember Cathcart, but there is also, I believe, a thought to defer this ordinance for one week.
Councilman McCattart?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to defer one week.
Second.
It's been moved to the second, any comter? Yes?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, it's, it's just, there's really no, no fault here. I mean, I'll take some of the fault, I guess, but really, it's just trying to get, you know, get the amendments written up. Chris is, you know, obviously has a lot on his plate with other stuff, and so trying to just put all this together, it's just taken some time. I had hoped, the reason there were two amendments is, I had hoped to just have one with just sort of a agreement between the administration and council on how to amend, but there just wasn't, there's a piece that I, that, that I had disagreed with in terms of the process, and so there just wasn't time to go back and forth. And by the time, you know, we had it written up, it was, we're at the deadline, and so that's, that's the reason. And so hopefully with this one-week deferral, we can get some clarifications or make, make whatever tweaks necessary. Probably will have to be through a suspension, but that might be doable, so.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, definitely committed into trying to kind of synthesize these a little bit, and appreciate the deferral.
It's been moved to the second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is approved.
And counsel, we would want to approve our updated draft agenda as modified for next week, so I'm not sure. Yeah, just a motion to approve the twenty-fourth agenda.
Motion to approve the twenty-fourth agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any abstentions? Noes?
No.
This one, no. That is approved. We will see you all tonight at 6:00 PM at the Northeast Community Center for our first town hall for 2025, starting at 6:00 PM. Thank you.